Meeting for Thursday, September 5th, 2024. We have a room full of people and we're so excited to have you all here to join us. Just a couple of housekeeping things. We record these meetings live on YouTube. So if you'll refrain from talking to your neighbor inside chambers, that would be great. If you want to have a conversation, please go outside the door and shut it. You'll still be able to hear the meeting in the lobby. We just want to make sure that people can clearly hear us as they listen to the stream later or live. So thank you for that. Okay. Our opening will be provided by Councilmember Perry Oaks. He'll then follow up with the Pledge of Allegiance. So he will lead us in that as soon as his opening is over. Turn the time to Perry.
If you've been to council meetings and I have an opening, I try to say something other than just a prayer and the pledge. And I was talking with my father earlier today and he said, you know, well, do something different. He said, you have a good, have a good singy voice. Why don't you sing a song? So, no. But I would like to read "America the Beautiful." And if you just pay attention, because if you're thinking about this time as we're getting ready to vote within two months for a new president and about this great nation, it's profound. And so, "Oh, beautiful for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesties above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful for pilgrim feet whose scorn impassioned stress, a thorough fair of freedom, beat across the wilderness. America, America, God mend thine every flaw; confirm thy soul and self-control in liberty, thy liberty and law. Oh, beautiful for heroes proved in liberating strife, whom more than self their country loved, and mercy more than life. America, America, may God thy gold refine, till all success be nobleness, and every gain divine. Oh, beautiful for patriot dream, that sees beyond the years, thine alabaster cities gleam undimmed by human tears. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea." I'll offer an opening prayer, please. Our Father in Heaven, we're so thankful for the many blessings which we have to be able to live in this free land. We're thankful for the freedoms which we have. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to be able to govern ourselves. We're thankful for leadership. We pray for good leadership. We pray for wisdom in our leaders. We pray for peace and prosperity in this nation. And we pray that thy Spirit might be upon this nation at this time when there's such division among us for so many different silly reasons. We pray that we might have a productive meeting this evening and say these things in Jesus' name. Amen. If, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Oaks. Appreciate your opening. At the beginning of our city council meeting, we have a period called public comment. We have two people that have signed up to speak. The way it works is like this. These individuals have three minutes to share their comments with the council and the audience. During this time, we don't interrupt them. We don't comment. We allow them to have the floor. And so, two people have signed up. I'll call you up in order. There'll be a timer on the screen and your microphone will die at the end of three minutes. So Kathleen, Catherine, Catherine Lisby and Tara Obison. If you'll come up in that order, we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Lisby and I live at 1814 South Sunset Drive. And my property, my acre of land is right to the east of Brian Carlin's property. I don't know if you all received the email that I sent this last week, and so I appreciate your consideration for that. I'm not naive to think that development's not coming. I'm not naive about that. I know that Symphony Homes owns the nine and a half acres directly south of us, as well as a bunch of other land that way. So we know it's coming. All I ask is that we follow the city plan. That's one. And I think it's dangerous to approve without understanding exactly what Brian's thinking about. And I just ask that we develop this smartly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Tara Obison. I live on 1779 Sunset Drive. I'm also here to address the change, the zoning change. So I actually like Brian's thing. I like that it's, we have more moderate or more densely populated stuff or Kaysville, but I think Brian owns the wrong parcel of land. The road infrastructure is not there. There's a lot of maybes, ifs, and hopefully everything falls into place. And if he had property that went along where it's connecting to Angel, where the infrastructure supports it, that would be great. But he's in the middle of a field and we're talking about, we're not talking about the 27 homes that he wants to put in because he's looking at the neighbor to the south also developing it. So it's more like 60 homes. So that's like 135 cars coming out of roads that weren't built for that. And that's my only concern. You know, I like, I like your plan, Brian, just the wrong parcel of land.
Thank you. All right. Now I will turn the time over to Cole. Oh, actually, I'll do the swearing in first. I'll invite our youth city council members to come to the front and I get the honor of swearing you in. So come up to the front if you will and I'll meet you right there. Let me find my paper. Okay. For, for those that don't know, we have a youth city council in Kaysville. And these are our newest members and we're so excited to be able to have them be a part of our, of our city experience. As youth city council members, they'll have the opportunity to go to the Capitol for the day at the Capitol with the legislators and they'll get to meet the governor and they'll get to meet our state leaders, as well as other mayors and new city council members from across the state. The youth city council this year is working on the Scarecrow Walk, Scarecrow. They did it last year. They participate in city events. They help out with, fill the fire truck for the Kaysville Gives fundraiser that we do at Christmas time. They help in so many ways. And so we're really excited to have them and we're excited to be able to swear them in. So if you guys will kind of come in towards me, that would be great. And you'll repeat after me and you'll, you'll submit, you'll mentally silently say your own names, okay? So if you'll raise your right hand, this is your oath of office. So along with being really confidential and professional and great representatives of the city, you get to be officially sworn in. So, aye and then silently say your own name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. I did that wrong. I said it one time, so now we're all going to repeat it, okay? And you can say it out loud. Sorry, guys. Okay. So aye, say your name. Yeah, and I'm sorry, you can say your name out loud. Let's start over. Okay. Aye and then say your name out loud. I do solemnly swear that I will support obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Thanks, you guys. Thanks, audience, for bearing with us on that. Congratulations. Hey, we want to, yeah, let's come in front of the podiums and let's do it for future. We'd like to do this with our council members. We're so excited to have you guys, so if you'll come in together, that would be great. Okay. And we'll just maybe double up. We all have to get in the picture, so yeah, maybe let's make two rows. Can we make two rows? I wear my heels, so I'll just. Okay, three, two, one. Do three, go. All right, thanks, guys. Congratulations on your shoot, I totally forgot. Okay. That's all right. We've got this. Okay. All right. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a presentation recognizing Chad Cole for his contributions as a Kaysville City Fourth of July Parade Chair. Cole is going to introduce Chad and tell you all about how amazing he is. As a council, we're so grateful for his efforts as well. So turn the time over to Cole.
Well, we're grateful for, to have this opportunity to recognize Chad and if he wants to come forward, we're grateful that he's here tonight. He's a busy man and so to have him here is, we're just honored to have him and recognize him. So Chad has been instrumental in our July 4th parade for a number of years, volunteering on the back end of things. And then in 2021, 2022 and 2023, he was our parade chair and did a fantastic job. What Chad organized for us on the parade has set us up for success in the future. Just a very detail oriented, can't say enough, good compliments for Chad and what he's done for Kaysville City and for our July 4th parade and navigating a difficulty a few years ago. We're just very grateful for Chad and wanted to present him with a replica of the July 4th parade that the artist Chad Hawkins did a few years ago, which is, the full one is displayed in the police station. So Chad, if you want to say anything or some, but just, on behalf of Kaysville City, we just want to say thank you for all you've done for us in July 4th and parade and all the other things that you did for Kaysville City as well. So thank you.
Do you want to take a picture with you, Chad?
I said we should just stay down there. I was told we should not stand, Mike has told we should not stand. I'll be in back. It's a good fold.
It's not good. It looks terrible. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we figured we might as well make this city council all about parks and recreation and stuff. The other presentation we want to recognize is our community theater production group. They've been very instrumental, just a little bit of history of this group and then we'll call their names. But they've been pretty much together as a group for 26 years, have done 25 shows minus COVID. The COVID year was the only year that they didn't produce a show for the Kaysville Community Theater. And so this last show was their last year together as a group. And we just wanted to recognize them and just say thank you for the countless years that they've produced this show unbeknownst to a lot of people of who they even are. But I think our community theater speaks for itself in the production, the quality and the quantity and the, just the actors and stuff that were coming back year after year. So we would like to just present each one of the members of the production group with their plaque and then, of course, a picture. So Kristin Callar, she was Do you want to introduce the rest of your crew?
Yeah. I'm just
I'll let, I'll let Kristin introduce the rest of her production group.
Awesome.
Laurie Story, come on up. Laurie did choreography and costuming for us. Jessica Rampton, she did our musical direction for us. Carol Wilkinson isn't here. She has COVID. So she just got home from Sweden. So, you know, there's better places to get COVID. So I'll, I can take this to her, so. And she did our costuming as well. And then Colin Wilson did our lighting for years and years and years. He now works at Disneyland, so doing lighting. So he went on to kind of bigger and better things, but I'll get this to him as well. And then our last one is, who's that one? Oh, geez, we're going to do this one first. Aaron Ford, get up here. Aaron Ford was one of our choreographers for years. And he moved to Florida and then moved back. So he didn't go very far. And then our last one is Karen Androsco and she also couldn't come tonight. And she was one of our choreographers as well. And Chad Cole, actually, for years and years and years was our technical director over at Davis High doing the show. So it's, it's kind of apropos that he's here with us tonight too, because we worked together for a lot of years. So thank you.
We'll get a photo here in just a second, but I just am so appreciative of all of our community volunteers, the countless amount of hours that these groups, both this group and Chad Cole, spent in behalf of Kaysville City, helping with these community events is just, it's amazing and we're grateful for them because these things don't happen without our community volunteers. And so we are just very happy and grateful for your volunteerism over the course of 26 plus years, which is crazy. So
I was 23 when we started this. I don't know why anyone had to meet the keys to this.
Well, Kristin and I went to high school together, so 26 years is a lot of time. So thank you again.
She's aged better, Cole.
All right, let's go. Okay, three, two, one.
And then for our final recognition tonight, I'm going to turn the time over to Brian White. He is one of our recreation program coordinators to introduce our Kaysville All-Stars. Brian?
All right. We have two of our winning All-Star teams here. They took place in the Northern Utah Baseball and Softball Tournament that we hosted here at Barnes Park. As a city, we were responsible for most of that and most of the games were played here. So it was great to see two of our teams put in that effort and go. These two coaches that we have here, both of them have worked, have volunteered for the city for a number of years. I've got to know both of them personally and I'm grateful for the friendship that we have and I'm grateful for the way that they lead these young men, these young women. There's a lot of teams that came here to play in there. There was seven different cities that were represented and these two teams came out on top. So I'm going to have Seth Allen come up. He's our junior high All-Star coach. So Seth, come on up here. And even though he's not a Kaysville resident, he wants to play here. So he'll pay the extra fees and come here. So we're grateful for that. And then Matt Haberke, come on up here. He's got his own cheering section. That's awesome. And he didn't not coach our regular season and I had to like convince him to do All-Stars again, but he's amazing with the young women and he's done a great job. So we're going to have their teams come up and we're going to let them hold this trophy. This trophy is now the annual trophy that the teams get to have. It has the plaque on there that goes for each year and we got Kaysville represented twice this year.
Awesome. Thank you. It's so cute.
Somebody can hold that in the middle. Don't drop it, though. How do we want to do this? What do you want? Yeah. Do we need to do two separate ones? Okay, let's do two separate ones. Let's do the
I mean, I
Not everybody.
Okay, well, let's see, make sure I can see all your faces. All right, get ready. Three, two, one, All-Stars!
All-Stars!
All right, I'm going to have a wait.
Good job. Mayor, do you want to do that here in this?
Yeah, I would.
Come on. The mayor's coming down. One second.
All right, three, two, one, All-Stars!
All-Stars!
Three, two, one, All-Stars!
Thank you, guys. Did you get one, Julie?
Yeah, what is Julie doing?
Oh, no.
First time?
Hey, number, number 11, you've got a team. Hold the house.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Oh, did I? Oh, oh, well, okay. That's gay. I got out of order. Oh, I did, didn't I? No, that's for item two. I know, this is also public comment. So did I call it called the public? Thank you so much. Congratulations, everybody. Thanks. Okay, Cole. Cole Stevens is our Parks and Rec Director and he is now going to present about his department. We are so excited for this.
So what you just witnessed is, I think, the essence of Parks and Recreation for the community. We're just grateful again for all of the volunteers, you know, our recreation programs, the countless hours that our volunteer coaches put in, all the service projects that occur in our parks and cemetery. Just very grateful for all those people that contribute so much to the community and make it what it is. So I'm grateful, like the mayor said. My name is Cole Stevens. Is this on? You're all right? This is just the arrow, right? I guess if you turn it on, it helps. So, sorry, Melinda. Yeah, it usually helps. So, so Parks and Recreation, Kaysville. We're going to, I'll be very brief, what's in the report. Hopefully you've had time to read and if there's any questions at the end, feel free to ask. But I'm just grateful for the department I work with and the people that I work with. This is just kind of our department responsibilities. It's more than just Parks and Recreation. It's Parks, Trails, Recreation, Cemetery. And then we also oversee all city facilities from a maintenance standpoint and new construction and then just other public properties, rights away, things like that. Our citizens' boards are involved with our department, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Ramp Advisory Board, and then also liaison with the Historic Preservation Commission for the city. This is our full, this is our staff made up of full-time and some part-time staff. I am happy to report that the vacant cemetery, Sexton, position was filled today. It was filled by Jackie Hubbard, who was a part-time employee for us. And so we did the interview process and all that stuff. And so we're excited to have that position filled and now we just move forward. So, but it's these individuals here within our department that make our Parks and Recreation Department go. And not to mention those little bottom three boxes, the seasonal staff, both in parks, cemetery and then our recreation. Without those seasonal staff, young people, nothing gets done to the level it is. So I just want to shout out to all of our Parks and Recreation employees. To start really briefly with the cemetery, 1865, goes back quite a few years. This is just to give you a seven-year interment history report. It kind of just tracks, this is what we use to just gauge, you know, new lawn, when we need to develop, that kind of stuff. And so this last year, we did 172 and this year, we're on track to do pretty close to that same number. This is our six-year interment history for urn burials or cremations. You can see those are increasing, which is also compared to a national trend where urn burials are increasing nationwide and becoming more popular here in, here in Utah. Just some brief facts about the cemetery, 22 acres. Right now, we're doing a space, burial space, right sales at need only. The main reason, or the reason for that is to prolong the life of the cemetery. If we currently just did pre-need, we'd be selling out. When we say sell out, the land isn't sold, it's just the right to that space. We would be within about 10 years of being completely sold out. And so by doing it at need, that will prolong that 20 to 25 years, going at that, at our current pace. Just some highlights and projects in the cemetery this past year and these upcoming years. This last year, this current FY '25, we're replacing the old irrigation system in the cemetery. Some of it dates back to 1950, which is just a lot of problems. And so that should go out to bid here the end of this month. And then in FY '26, FY '27, we are planning to do Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Memorial Memory and Cremation Garden Area. I know we talked about it in the budget meetings prior, so that's kind of our, our future plans. The other thing out there 10 years plus is what happens when the cemetery is completely developed and sold out. It's a council decision that's going to be coming up that will have to decide what is the future of that. We're landlocked where we are, so do we look at other spaces, other properties that the city currently has? Just lots of different options to consider, but we're still a few years away from having to make that decision. You can cross off the vacant cemetery because that's now filled. So this is just to highlight what we're planning for the cremation garden area, their memory garden area there behind the city cemetery office. It's kind of a dirt vacant area right now. And that's our plans. And this is just kind of highlights and pictures of what will be located within that memory garden area, cremation garden area for the cemetery. Our parks, our parks are scattered throughout, out through all Kaysville. We do a fairly good job of hitting most of our subdivisions with a few areas that lack a little bit of coverage. This is just some highlights. I'm not going to go through and read all of these one by one, but we are increasing our acreage as far as developed. We track our acreage developed versus undeveloped. Undeveloped is those acres and the good bulk of that undeveloped property is the East Mountain Wilderness Park, which is about 138 acres of that 201. The difference between developed and undeveloped is pretty self-explanatory. That, this last year highlighted a couple of projects that we completed. Wilderness Park Parking Lot up at the Wilderness Park with a ramp, funding and also state and Davis County funds. And then this year, we just did the post And then this year, we just did the post-ention basketball court. We got a couple other upcoming projects this fall, the Rail Trail Trailhead Project. Right now, we're just getting the permit from UTA, so we have to encroach into their easement to construct some of the parking lot. And so that will be bid out here shortly, as well as some playground replacements at Angel Street, and then the pickleball court resurfacing. For anybody that's listening, the pickleball courts will be closed starting Monday, September 9th through September 16th, so that resurfacing can happen. There's no way to do it and keep them open. So. Future projects, one of some of our biggest, the biggest one is Trappers Field, the north side of 200 North, down as it goes into the West Davis Corridor. We're constantly looking for water conservation projects, the way that we can reduce our water consumption in our turf, in our landscapes. And we have identified some examples of things that we're going to start doing over the next couple of years, such as removing park strips at the fire station, redoing some stuff at the operations center as far as landscaping. And of course, all this comes with budget funding. One of the challenges we have, and I don't want to highlight or focus on all our challenges, but one of the challenges that we have, and we're having it across pretty much every division except for recreation, is our staffing, being that we're so young and new. Of the four, of the six full-time parks employees, four of them are three years or less. And so what happens in that scenario is just the ability to get up to that, quote, institutional knowledge of how we expect things to be done and what we want to see. And so there's just a lot of training that has to go on. And so when you see things that maybe, why aren't things getting weeded as maybe as they were? It goes back to that, just having a young, full-time staff that doesn't sometimes see the big picture. They do all, they are great employees, but that is one of the, just a learning curve that we experience. And then just a shout out to all of our seasonal employees in the parks. They just, they make or break us every year. So we're grateful for them. And we finally, this year, broke a trend where we were fully staffed on the parks seasonal side. So that was good to see. And then this is just a highlight, this is a paragraph. I'm not going to read it, from our Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was adopted about three years ago. This kind of, I just want to highlight this map. It just shows of our, our parks, where they're located, and then some areas where there's that little asterisk is areas in the community that are a farther distance away from a park than would be a standard. And so those are areas where, you know, the one on the east, side east of this block is very difficult because of, the block's already developed. But this just kind of shows you where our parks are and how they hit every group in the city, resident in the city. And then the far right, that's just the national standard of, or not the standard, that's the, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, kind of what the level of service for parks and open space that the city is going for. Our recreation, I'm glad that our All-Stars could be here tonight because that's, you know, it's, it's all about these kids having, my motto is have an experience. That can mean a lot of different things, but for these kids to have these experiences, which builds a lot of character and teaches them a lot of things, is important. And so our recreation program, and Chris Hare does an amazing job with all of our recreation programming and, and all the needs that we have there. And we'll highlight a few of our shortcomings. But this year, we offer anywhere from age three up to adult, elderly people, I guess you can sort of speak. We've highlighted some things that we've hosted this year, the Northern Utah All-Star Baseball, which our teams here participated in. We also hosted the Utah Recreation and Parks Association Junior State Pickleball Tournament out at Barnes Park this year. The one bullet point I want to highlight here, and you're all aware of the opportunity we have maybe with Kaysville Junior High and Davis School District to partner with the gymnasium. Our coordination with Davis School District is, is still good, and, but what's happening over the years is the school programs grow. As an example, this year at Davis High School, with the boys volleyball now becoming a sanctioned high school sport, was using that same gym space that we normally had the ability to use. And so our time for using their gymnasiums is really getting cramped. Is that a correct assessment, Chris? So, in fact, this year, we've had to institute a waitlist or a cap our numbers before the season even starts, just because we know that we can't, we just have a certain number that we can't even find gymnasium for. And we always have waitlists, and that's one thing that we don't like because then we're eliminating kids' opportunity to participate. So. So that opportunity hopefully will present itself in 2027 with the Davis School District in partnering with the Kaysville Junior High remodel of their gymnasium space. Anything you want to add to that, Chris? Yeah. Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, yeah. We'll always be using schools. And one of the things this year too is, in our budgets, we, last year, we had to rent Farmington's Gymnasium for some of our programs, and so that just adds cost to programs when you have to rent facilities. So. And this is the numbers of our programs. In total, participants from September last year to August of this year, our recreation programs serve 13,846 participants in all of those various programs. Our biggest program is soccer, followed by junior jazz basketball. So a lot of kids, a lot of kids have the opportunity to participate in our programs, and we're grateful for that, as well as a lot of adults. And this is highlights, this is from a survey that was done back when we did our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, just about the need for a recreation program in, in the community and what a vital role it plays for the citizens to have places to recreate. Highlight our citizens' boards. Historic Preservation Commission meets at least quarterly. Their charge is just to preserve history within Kaysville, photographing homes and things like that. And then we have a database that they stored on, on our city's servers. Parks and Recreation Board, again, meets quarterly, and they're involved in community events. And then our Ramp Advisory Board is the board that meets, that receives all the applications and then recommends funding to the city council. They meet less frequently, with the exception of the spring. This is just a small list of our community events. Every single one of these community events requires the volunteers that we recognize here today to make these things happen. And so we're grateful for all of their volunteers and grateful for our corporate sponsors that help fund some of our programs as well. And then just to highlight the facilities, we go, our oldest building is the old, is the old library building, go to 1944 to the newest building, which is the, this building with the addition in 2020. We maintain a total of 80,100 square feet of facility space, which is custodial service, everything that you can imagine that we maintain. And then I'll just, I believe this is the last slide, just end with this statement. It comes from our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I'll just read it. Parks, open space, recreation, and trails are a vital component of Kaysville's form and identity. Tending together as a system, they provide places to gather, recreate together with friends and family while maintaining ties to the city's roots and heritage. The city's parks, open space, and trails also provide visual and physical relief from the built environment, serving as places of rest, but recreation, and connection to the natural environment. When fully realized, the system will enhance the health and well-being of the community, creating a more complete and unified city in the process. And I couldn't say it any better than what that paragraph states, that what Parks and Recreation do for the city is bring the community together for all the reasons listed in that statement. So. That kind of concludes the high-level report. If you have any questions, happy to answer any. If not, we'll get to go.
Councilmember Oaks.
Yeah. No questions, just, just thanks. You know, and you get this during the budget, when we're going through the budget. The vast amount that you guys are responsible for in the city that you do with such a small staff, it really is amazing. And, and couldn't be done, you know, without all the volunteers that then come in to coach teams and get involved. And it's what makes a city a city. So, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cole.
Thanks.
Outstanding. Okay, we're on item number four, Conflicts of Interest. Anyone have anything that they'd like to declare? Nope. Okay, would someone like to then make a motion on item number five, our consent agenda?
Fine. I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A and B.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Moving on to six, item number six, rezone of 2.8 acres of property located at 1735 South, 550 West, from A1 to four-family residential for Brian Carling. I'll turn the time over to Melinda to present this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said in our introduction, this is for a rezone for Brian Carling, who submitted an application a couple of months back. And it's, his property is 2.8 acres, and it's approximately, address is 1735 South, 550 West. It's currently zoned A1 light agriculture role, and he's requesting the rezone go through for R4. Just a few things. So the applicant, Mr. Carling, did submit a concept of 27 townhomes that would be on various sizes of property. And based on the size of property, and I'll go over a little bit more in that detail later on a different slide, but you could have either two townhomes, three or four townhomes. The R4 district doesn't allow for any more than four attached units. So this is just to orient you, this is where the property is. It's located in the southwest area of the city, over in an area that is primarily agricultural and near where the Sunset Equestrian Center is. This is a view of the current zoning. That red arrow points to Mr. Carling's property. And most everything around there is, is agricultural and/or the residential agricultural, which allows half-acre lots and a blend of agriculture use as well as the single-family. So when we look at rezone requests, we, we want to look towards the general plan to see what that guides us to do. And there's many elements in the general plan. Our general plan was adopted in 2022. General plans by nature have a lot of conflicting information in them. General plans are advisory, meaning the, the council does not have to follow what is in the general plan. And they're also idealistic, which means if everything went the way we wanted and all things developed perfectly, this would be the best outcome on our very best day. So that said, one of the elements that we look to in the future land use map, or in the general plan, is the future land use map. And this map indicates our best guess of how we would see property to be used in the future. The property that Mr. Carling owns is zoned to be single-family residential. Again, that red arrow is pointing to that property, but you can see most everything in that area is meant to be single-family residential. And our definition of single-family is a single-family detached product. So there's five chapters in the general plan. Two of them were germane to this item, as well as some other elements. But our first chapter of the general plan is a land use and place-making plan. And at the end of each chapter, there are goals and objectives and implementation steps that help inform staff of, you know, what, what does this goal mean? What is this objective? What, what's the intent of, of being accomplished with this goal and objective? And so when we look at those, you know, there is a little bit of reading into, you know, what does this goal mean? And some of that can be informed when you look to the, the goals. So one of the goals in the general plan is to preserve and protect Kaysville's small-town atmosphere, and that means limiting change in the neighborhood. So right now, this area where the subject property is, is a functional agricultural area. And so, you know, looking at that, that does relate to this because changing those functional neighborhoods can be problematic. Although the objectives speak more to single-family neighborhoods than agricultural, but nonetheless, that goal does say that we want to try and protect and preserve Kaysville's existing neighborhoods. So Goal Five, at the end of the Chapter One, is to preserve and enhance the remaining pastoral atmosphere and agricultural history that the city has had, and preservation of open space. You could look at this at a variety of ways, and I think the objectives, again, kind of clarify what this goal means, but there's various meanings it could be interpreted. The general plan encourage us to put, or encourages us to put ordinances in place that would preserve open space in, I think, a more uniform manner and perhaps have more group congregation open space. Or it could be preserving areas that are unique in the, in the city. We have the Wilderness Park, those types of things. The Chapter One also, well, let me go to, well, so Goal Eight, Goal Eight of Chapter One also states to provide a range of housing options and price points that help ensure that Kaysville has a variety of price points for people who want to live here or who may want to remain here but move from an existing home. So the general plan also has five core guiding principles, and one of those is also to prefer diverse housing options. So that said, providing, or providing diverse housing options would be something that could be supported by Mr. Carling's application. And then the state, over the last seven or eight years, has adopted legislation that requires cities to have a plan in place for modern income housing, which is a different definition than what you think of traditionally as affordable housing, which is usually subsidized. Modern income housing is just meant to be a housing product that is affordable at 80% of the area meeting income, which in, they go by the county, and so that's about 83,000, I think, in, in Davis County. And so what you can afford when you're a family making 83,000, that's the price point that would be, or 80% of that would be the, the modern income housing target. The state has required that we put the modern income housing portions into our plan. And, and so one of the goals, and this was existing in the, the general plan prior to when we, so we adopted it in August of '22, but we amended it to include the requirements from the state. So that said, the, what we committed to do with the state is to give strong consideration on rezone applications that don't fit the general plan, or excuse me, the future land use map, but may have other elements of the general plan to support that. So again, there's information in the general plan, I think, that both supports and also opposes this. But what we committed to the state to do is to give a strong consideration of approval to that. So I want to just talk quickly about some of the differences between A1 and R4. It's pretty self-explanatory, but the biggest difference, right, is your minimum lot size and also the use of having attached dwellings versus detached. So the agricultural one acre is kind of what that A1 stands for, but it has a 40,000 square foot minimum lot size. R4, you can get down to essentially as low as 3,000 if you look at the 12,000 feet that are, square feet that are required to have the four dwelling units. So height is the same, setback is five foot less with R4, side setbacks are two feet less with R4. The rear setbacks are half between A1 and R4, and the frontage is 70 feet on the R4 versus 100 at the A1. So this is just kind of a quick look at some of the major portions of our R4 ordinance. It does allow single-family, but it allows four-family buildings up to four, or four units attached. So 8,000 square feet lot, you can get two, 10,000 is three, and 12,000 is four. And that's where that number on the previous slide came to, that 3,000 square foot. You do have to provide 600 square feet of open space per unit, and you also have to provide some outdoor storage space per unit. So this, this application has had an interesting journey. It's been in front of the Planning Commission twice. Prior, prior to the Planning Commission on July Prior to the Planning Commission on July 11th, we received several, I don't know, a few dozen emails actually, and continued to receive emails through the Planning Commission portal even after that meeting. And those were provided to you in your packet. It's important that we pass that information along from the Planning Commission to the City Council so that you can see firsthand what the residents are thinking and saying. That said, there was a parallel between the comments that came in in email and then at the public hearing on July 11th, and the opposition was based on density, changing the rural feel, traffic. There was some comments about health impacts, lighting, property values, and then losing the agricultural space. So again, this was in front of the Planning Commission at the July 11th meeting, and during that meeting, we realized that myself and the applicant had a miscommunication about what his intents with the project were. And in any way, based on that confusion and I think the feedback from the residents, the Planning Commission asked staff in the applicant to go back and look at maybe some different options than just the R4 and come back with a development agreement. After conversations with Mr. Carling, in the end, he decided he wanted to proceed with the R4 zone and not enter into a development agreement. So that's what we took back to the Planning Commission last month on August 8th. We only had six members there that night, and so this is a rare occurrence to have a failed motion or to have a tie vote. We have a seven-member council just for that reason. But nonetheless, there was a motion that was made to approve the rezone, and that failed to pass, so it was a tie vote of three to three. The commission chose not to submit another motion, and so, but they did have quite a bit of discussion after that failed motion and wanted the staff to communicate to the council that they would be supportive of R18 zoning in this area, which is a single family zone, but with a development agreement. I think primarily their concern with a development agreement was to try and match some of the existing very low density with the houses that front Sunset and then the development of the lots that would be on the eastern portion of Mr. Carling's property. So that said, my initial, or my staff recommendation at the Planning Commission meeting in August was to recommend denial to the Planning Commission, or that the Planning Commission recommended denial to the City Council. That's also a very uncommon occurrence, typically because when we have conversations with prospective applicants, if they have an idea that really doesn't match with what the general plan would support, we typically don't end up receiving an application and processing that. So it is rare to have a recommendation of denial. So it's also rare to not really have a recommendation with the Planning Commission. So that said, I don't really have a recommendation for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant here this evening and...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. We appreciate that. And we have looked at our packet, all the information is there. Let's see, usually, so I will tell our public commenters, I apologize, you see I'm toggling between my glasses. Public comment, we have a separate public comment sheet, and then we have a public comment sheet prior to this agenda item. So I apologize, you did speak already, so I appreciate that. We remember what you said. Usually you would have an opportunity here instead of at the beginning of the meeting, so my apologies, my apologies for that. All right. Brian, would you like to come up? And then we will go ahead and ask questions and...
Mayor and Council, I would like to defer some of my time to allow some of the people that are here that want their voice to be heard.
Okay.
Is that okay with you? I would welcome it. I think it would be helpful for you to hear the people that have come. They have very deep vested interests. We're all neighbors, and if you guys are open to that, maybe limiting it to those that are very passionate, and I welcome the comments that might come from them. It's up to you, Mayor.
Yeah, appreciate that. I will just mention also, I apologize, you guys, in seven years, I haven't had to leave a meeting early or miss a meeting. I do have to leave at 8:25. When I leave, our Mayor pro temp, Councilmember Oaks will take over. Just so you know, I'm not just leaving because I'm done listening or anything like that. Just wanted to make sure you know that. Okay. Okay. Anyway, generally speaking, we don't allow that. We have an opportunity for people to sign up at the beginning of the meeting. So I appreciate you being willing to yield some time. We have an opportunity for people to submit comments prior to the meeting. They can sign up to speak prior to the meeting as well. And you are always welcome to call us and communicate to us that way. At 6:30, we have question and answer period where we're just available, and so we would like to be able to have a discussion about the meeting and follow our agenda.
Okay. All right, so what I will do is, on their behalf, they're not going to want this. It's going to be too dense and too many cars. It will change their values. You've seen the comments in the letters and the summaries of phone calls that were in there. And I agree with a lot of what they're saying. What my goal here is to have the City Council consider thinking differently about where we're going with this crisis in Utah. The state legislature, obviously, they've put out some mandates, and I think that those are significant to look at. They are only effective, I believe, May 1st of this year, so this might be the first one that you're seeing. This is a rezone request to R4. I didn't think I would want to go with the RM, but I do think that the challenge of building something, developing and building something underneath the state's guideline where there's a $20,000 first home incentive, it has to be, number one, new construction, and it has to be under $450,000. I believe that in order for something like this to go through, I believe that shared walls are going to be necessary to do this. I don't think that we're seeing anything in all of West Kaysville with shared walls at all. I don't know if there's even been a duplex approved, but the two that are second north and south, the entire city, and west of I-15, it doesn't appear there's actually a shared wall building that has been put there in the last, I don't know how many years. There's a couple that are R2 on the mapping, but when you drive through there, they're very small lots, but they're single family dwellings. So the bids that I get tell me if larger lots are to be built on this property, the cost of the lot alone will bump up to almost $400,000 if an average land cost, development costs, and if any developer were to make a profit. That's real. It's going to be in the very high 370, 380, 390 range. Be that as it is, I want you to consider a couple of things that have been coming. The Shepherd Lane extension and the grant money that the city received. Where the roundabout is on Shepherd Lane, and that was extended, kind of for now, a road to nowhere, but from what I understood from prior years, that money was earmarked to help get the future frontage road and also to not drain the traffic, but direct that traffic in that whole neighborhood and the neighborhood's south along that extension of Shepherd Lane to the roundabout, which now, there's so many people that are going down to the Farmington 950 North exit to get on the Davis, the New Davis Highway. I believe there's also, and is there a map of the, there's an overview of the map of just the north where I believe it's Seabiscuit and Mare intersection comes? I bring this about because for, I don't know how many years now, there's been diagonal barriers there that prevent the entire neighborhood from going east up that dirt road to empty onto Sunset. There is a huge demand for traffic to get out of there and not go north and east of Fon Western.
Not on the road, though.
No, it's a, they call it an agricultural access, and I believe the city, the city owns the parcel, there's two parcels, and I believe that says private right there in the center of, so the city owns both of those parcels. The history was, the city and the county swapped lands many years ago, and the county didn't want anything to do with it, but it's called, I think legally, maybe your legal team can tell, I think it's an agricultural access until future things happen. Anyway, the point is...
Councilmember Oaks.
Are you talking about the road that's on Mare Lane that goes from Mare to Sunset? Or are you talking the part of the 550 West that will end up being Seabiscuit in the future, I think, as it goes down towards Angel?
We would assume so, but every property along that whole sector in there has an agricultural access across it. There's challenges to get that done. It's only 50 feet wide. I believe the city owns both of the parcels. I don't know that it ever got dedicated as a proper right of way, right where that word private is to the...
Okay. It can't, I can answer this, it can't because the connection, the road that's coming, it's, I think Burton, Burton is coming...
To the west?
Yeah, from east to west, and it's too sharp of a turn.
Yes, and there's two opposing left-hand turns, which the city in the past said. So that will be vacated at some point. Anyway, the point is that I believe all of the traffic will be heading south. I've been told that the private lane in front of my property will be a 66-foot wide road if and when that ever happens. That's more of like, more of a collector size, it's not the 55 feet. So all of us have to give up more space because it would be reasonable to expect all of that northwest traffic will go south, catch on that extension of Shepherd, and head down toward the freeway. It's the quickest way to go north. It is. And if you consider that, I'm certain the staff of the city is highly competent to ensure that safety and traffic will be covered. Nothing will happen in this area unless it's properly vetted by the city. So when people talk about traffic and safety, I believe the professionals employed by the city are more than capable. When we think about the Shepherd Lane and the exit that they're building on and off ramp off I-15, that's another one. I think a lot of the traffic is going to be directed south. There's also on the city's map, right north of 950 North is a commercial zone. Well, no, it's not a commercial zone, but it's identified as commercial. It would appear that Symphony Homes and Ivory Homes are in the works right now, watching what we're doing, and they might very likely be proposing kind of a master plan there. I met with Symphony Homes, and they want to get more properties under their umbrella to make it big and grand. I just don't, I just don't want to sell. I want to do it myself. I have family interests, I have a large family and many nieces and nephews. They're not here tonight, they weren't there during the Planning Commission because they don't know we're having the meeting, they don't ever think that they can afford to live here, and a lot of them are afraid because there's such, such a passionate response to not allow anything to come in here. When we look at the circumstance in Kaysville, there is one home under $450,000 in all of Kaysville. It's one. It's on Crestwood Lane, it's just east of Main Street on the north side, right by the professional center. That's it. There is one new home for sale. If you look on realestate.com or Realtor.com and KSL, there's one home that's new, $699,000. The lowest existing home on KSL or Realtor.com, the lowest, you can look at it right now, is $483,000. The Utah State, the First Time Home Buyer Assistance Program, it provides $20,000 for new construction under 450. That's the criteria. When we look at all of the interest rates, when all of the cities, the work group that they did, the surveys that they did, that's part of the appendix of the general plan, well, all that data was taken back in 2021, I believe. When we look at what interest rates were, they peaked just last October at a 7.3 something. Well, right now, they're still in the mid-sixes. When all of the data that talks about what's affordable and the 30% of, you know, some kind of adjusted income or whatever, we are so far beyond that. There are so many people that would like to live in Kaysville, and there's zero opportunity for them. So what I'm presenting for you, as I've combed through the general plan, I have looked very closely, this is my opinion, but it appears that we are segregationists. It appears that we will not allow anybody that has a lower income to enjoy anything in West Kaysville. How, when I look at, when I look at the federal laws, when we look at, I think it's the, the attorneys might have to help me here, if, I think it's the equal protection clause. It implies that we can't segregate, we can't differentiate based upon class. Income has been interpreted in Texas to be class. So what I'm...
Go ahead, I do have a question for you, but...
So what I believe needs to happen is in some of the remaining areas that are still developable, this would be an opportunity to have something that is different, that is affordable. When we look at the general plan, and I've got a lot of notes to go over, I have researched this extensively, and I could bring up so many bullet points of how this does qualify. And like Melinda said, that there's conflicting parts of the general plan. We want to comply with what the state's mandate is. When the state has a mandate, there's also a reporting every single year. And when you report, you have to report on every decision that you make, as far as I understand. And if I give you a good faith opportunity to hit multiple points of your stated goals in the general plan, I find it very hard that you would deny it.
Okay, I have a question that appreciate what you've shared with us, and I also appreciate the fact that you're talking about the goals to provide attainable housing, right? We all understand that, we appreciate that, I would think. I have a question, so the Planning Commission made a recommendation to you to come back with a development agreement, because everything that you're talking about can be contained and controlled through a development agreement. What you're talking about is what we're all trying to accomplish. We want owner occupied properties, and we want affordable properties. And so there are two D restrictions that you could potentially put on your properties in order to accomplish both of those things through a development agreement. It would give us the security of knowing that is actually what we're going to get in the end. So I guess my biggest question is, are you opposed to a development agreement? You didn't come back with it, and so...
Well, when you, there was a recent rezone from agricultural to R120. I do not believe reading that there was a development agreement for that.
Which project are you talking about?
I would have to go back and look. It would be within the last year and a half. There was an R120 rezone that was granted, but there was no development agreement for that. So why would, is it, I found nowhere in the code that said development agreements are required on zoning changes.
Well, they are.
They're not required, but they are recommended.
My preference would to be not encumbered by anything that would be a rider on top of that.
But you see, like...
Councilmember Adams.
I mean, I think you see why for us, that's, we lose all capability of controlling what goes there.
Is there anything wrong with trusting landowners?
Yeah.
So then, why doesn't your code require it? If it's not required, I'm not asking for extra encumbrances.
But that's what...
I'm just asking to be treated fairly.
Well, what you're asking is for us to increase the density by like 100 times, you know?
Based upon what?
Well, I understand all of the things you're mentioning, like, you know, Mayor said, those are all things that we want solved. We want, we want more families to be able to afford homes, and we want to somehow provide that. The issue, the, I mean, the issue with what you're saying is, how do we know you're going to do that? We're just supposed to trust that you'll do that?
You should trust that I would follow the R4 zoning and the building requirements.
Yeah, but the R4 zoning could be homes that are $600,000.
You should change the zoning. Am I not right?
No, I don't know what you're saying.
You should delineate what is allowed or not allowed. I'm trustworthy and I'm honest and I'm...
We're not questioning your integrity at all.
Yeah, no, definitely not. I think...
We're saying generally speaking.
Yeah, and I think what we're trying to say, at least from my standpoint, and I don't know if we're at the comment stage, but there's so much missing in your plan. I mean, no mention of where the roads are going to come in and out of, and who's going to...
North and south, right there on that private lane.
Are you planning to pay for both roads?
I will pay my pioneering agreement when the big boys come in, Ivory and Symphony. They're right on the... They're right on the heels.
And that's fine, but I, I want to see that before I, you know, ever approve.
With a rezone, do you require all rezones to have the full plans with full construction plans? Am I being singled out?
Meh, I don't think you're being singled out. I think there's just something that we have to look at. Like, from my standpoint, I can't sit here and, uh, you know, hodgepodge. I mean, yours is a very, very small piece in an overall plan. And our job as a council is to look at the overall plan. We're to plan for the future. If we allow everybody to take their two acres and rezone it and rezone, we hodgepodge the whole, the whole plan. And yeah, for me, it's a big part of me ever changing rezone is, show me what it's going to look like, a- all of it.
Can you pull up, Melinda, can you pull up the concept plan?
Well, I see the concept of your little piece, but I don't know what Symphony's going to do.
James and Julie Purine, which are my neighbors to the south, they are in a, I, I, never mind. They, they can't, um, attend these meetings for their personal reasons. They are in agreement with me that we would have a mirror image of both of ours because we need safety, we need, we need entrance, we need exit. So what this shows is my 2.8 acres. The Purines are just south of, they're, they're almost a mirror image of mine. So it would be sort of a horseshoe shape, except for on the side. So like prior plans that were done and proposed, people wanted to do cul-de-sacs and exclude anybody else and not clear out space for the future road, which is now eight feet. It used to be only two and a half feet. We're all going to have to give up eight feet in order to give the road its proper access of sixty-six feet wide. What I'm willing to do is include and work with my neighbors to the south so that this would be one cohesive subdivision that would enter and exit off of almost a major collector of 66 feet wide, which is looked at as 550 West. This would be self-contained. It would loop. I've talked to the engineers. This works. This is 55 feet. This would have sidewalks on both sides, front setbacks of 25 feet, which is standard in the, in the R8, R16, or, or R18, R16, R M two, four, and two. They are, that is consistent throughout the city as far as the design and the concept of giving it what is standard in the city.
I understand. Uh, here's the thing, Mr. Carlyle. I, I believe what Mayor was asking you that you're not answering is your excuse for why we should quadruple how many times the density in this area is because homes cost so much now that people can't afford them and that they wouldn't qualify unless they were in the $400,000 range. Yet, yet you're not willing to do a development agreement where you, where you bind yourself to only selling to those people. I mean, you, you're trying to get us to do it for one reason, but you're not willing to commit to do what you're saying you would do. And that, and that's where it's like, wait, this kind of feels like a bait and switch, even though it may not be, it feels like a bait and switch.
You've accused me of, of being disingenuous, number one.
No, no, I'm just saying, we, yeah, yeah.
Or deceiving you.
Well, then why aren't you doing a development agreement?
Do you have any evidence to believe that I have deceived you in any way, shape, or?
No, no, no. I'm not saying you're deceiving.
So we must, we must assume people are telling the truth.
What, what we're assuming in this situation is, is factual. You're, you're taking an agricultural property that's owned agricultural land undeveloped to this point, and you're wanting to put housing on it. And that's great. Sometimes when we have a zone that is, you know, it's already housing, and they want to add a lot behind it, such, you know, like the property that you chose to do that in West, or in East Kaysville on. And that, that's a lot simpler process. This is a, this is a development. And so therefore, we do ask for development agreements when the rezone is such, such a drastic difference from what's currently there.
Is that true? Is that in policy?
It's, it's our preference. This is a legislative body. So we can, we can do that. It's not part of our requirement to do that.
What I'm presenting to you is a plan to bring affordable houses. The general plan says, it doesn't say that they just need to be near the city center. That's not what it says. It says most. It doesn't say all of them. The, the state's mandate is that these be, um, heavily considered.
I, I will tell you, so we were in a Utah Cities of, a Utah ULCT meeting today. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Oaks. And we were talking about this specifically. And it is within our legislative power as a body to require development agreements on rezones. We don't have to require them. We could as a body require them. It's not in our code necessarily, but it is within our authority to do that. And so you, I mean, I, we don't, this isn't, this is not a personal sort of, we're questioning anything about you or questioning your integrity. We're just questioning the project, and we're saying we'd like more detail. At least I'm saying this. Now, I'm a non-voting member of this body. But from my experience, and my preference would be, that you provide a development agreement so that we can see the detail, so we know as a community what we're committing to. What you talked about, you talked about the properties around you. We know those properties. We know who the owners of those properties are, and we do know that eventually they'll be developed. We understand that. So it's really behooves us, and it's really a heavy responsibility for us from our perspective to say, okay, knowing that this other land will be developed, we want to make sure that what we do approve in a smaller development will align with the master plan for what, what as a community we're wanting to see there. And I think that that's what Don was trying to explain. So the takeaway from this, I, from our perspective is not, no, the city's singling us out and, and we're being preferential or we're being negative or whatever you're, you know.
Segregation.
Segregation, exactly. And we do have some projects in West Kaysville that are twin homes that have been, that have been entitled. We haven't really yet seen the, not twin homes, I'm sorry, um, townhomes. Um, we do have twin homes in West Kaysville as well that have already been built, so.
Those entitled as an R2, R4, or M?
Melinda would have to remind me on that.
Is that the ones north of Smiths?
Yes.
The ones right next to Smiths are R2.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, we're, we're not trying to segregate the community, saying east side gets multi, you know, density, west side does not. That is not, that's not part of the city's plan.
There's not a single, if you take 200 North and you go south, on the zoning map, there's not a single one. And the general plan says that it should be dispersed, most, mostly up here in the northeast. But also, if you look at like the public comment, the northeast quadrant in the survey showed that they felt more burden by having all of it there.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Blackham?
Well, I, I'd just like to say that, um, a general plan is not the Kaysville Council's general plan. It's the citizens of Kaysville's general plan. There was a lot of input in this general plan, and there are some takeoffs that you might be able not to get in black and white on paper. But one of the things that I got out of the general plan, meeting with the citizens time after time after time and listening to their comments, was we want detached, single-family dwellings in Kaysville, and we don't want to disrupt our existing neighborhoods. Those are two things that you can do a development without doing those things. Like, for instance, you're down there in an area where it was A5. A5 was five acres. You can put one house on five acres. There's also A1, which is 40,000 square foot lots. Then they went to RA. RA is what the subdivision to the north of you is. Those lots are not all 21,780 square feet. There are some that were smaller. Originally, RA was 30,000 square foot. They reduced it down to be a half acre, so it could still be an agricultural zone. Okay? So when you take that and you look at that and you say, okay, you could still be out, you, and then you did the R-120 came in, which is 20,000 square foot lots. It was knowledge, it was, it was well-known that West Kaysville, and that was in our existing general plan before this one was changed, that lots developed in West Kaysville should be at two units per acre. So a lot of the infrastructure was put into that, but we, we've, we've improved that over the time. But as you can see, even the RA, where the lots to the north of you may be smaller than the 21,780 of a half acre, which RA requires, it's because they took so much out of those lots and they build a common open space in the area in order to do that. So that was, uh, one of the things that was done through a development agreement, um, that they agreed on doing. Now, you could literally take what the property that you're asking for here, you could have come in with a different zone that would have had detached, single-family dwellings. You could have gone to an R-110, which in theory would be four units per acre, which would have been 100% increase in densities in that area. That's exactly what the state has asked us to do. Look for higher densities. That would be a higher density. It doesn't say, the state didn't say, every development that comes into your city has to meet the affordable housing. It says you need to work on your cities, your general plans, to help do that. And we've done that. We've actually complied with the state requirement. Two units per acre, we all sit up here now and say, that's probably not reasonable. Okay? But four units per acre, next to a subdivision that technically is two units per acre, although some of the lots are smaller because they gave up some open space, so they could have that. Um, but realistically, you could put something like an R-110. It would have a 30-foot setback, eight-foot side yards, 15-foot rear yard. Driving down the street, you wouldn't really know the difference between the subdivision to the north of you and this subdivision, yet it would be a 100% increase in density. That, to me, is quite a bit different. If you would have come in with something like that with a development agreement of some kind, saying that these need to be owner-occupied, um, I think I would be open to something like that. And looking at it, to me, that's a drastic change for West Kaysville. But it also says, it's following what the people who, who got involved in the general plan, it follows what they wanted, it also increases density, it does a lot of things the general plan, plan asks us to do. I think what you're asking us to do is way beyond what the general plan says for this area.
Yes, you're right.
Okay.
And what, one of the main points is, is that the general plan and what you're saying with R-110 does not get anywhere near the quote "affordable" housing. It's nowhere near it.
And as I said, the state did not say that every development in your city has to meet the affordable housing.
It does ask.
Now, you got to understand, you do an R-110, people can tend to move up into those subdivisions. They work to get up into those subdivisions, maybe. It may not be a first-time homebuyer, but it might be a second or third-time homebuyer's house that they'll buy, that they just vacated a first-time home somebody else can buy and start out in. That's what we're looking for. And, and so I think the council's willing to work in the general plan and work towards something like this, and, and we're willing to listen to you, and we want to find ways to make housing in Kaysville. But this is just too big a jump and too big of an ask for this area. It does change the make of the neighborhoods in the area. You could do this without doing that and still increase the densities.
Okay, increase in the density is, is one thing. If we go 1%, that's increasing it.
Sure. We're talking 100% increase, realistically.
Even 100% goes nowhere near helping the crisis the state, and the state has mandated to try and address affordable for moderate-income housing. So what I'm presenting is a concept that it should be hitting all of this, all of the city's requirements for this goal. And you guys, we just disagree on opinion. You all will have to make your decision. And if you.
Right.
I, I kind of knew what was happening.
And realistically, we're making the decision that, from the information of the 33,000 people, now maybe there will be some differing people that will say, okay, we want this everywhere. But the majority of the people that came into us and talked to us and the information we got from the general plan was what I've been talking about.
Thank you. Councilmember Oaks.
And it is unreasonable for people to believe that this land is not going to be developed. All that land there, you know, that goes, you know, I, I've read every, I've read most of the emails or the letters that came in, and they're all pretty much the same. You know, I mean, along the same lines a lot. That area's going to be, um, developed. But our responsibility, this is an opportunity for the city council and the city as a whole to, how do we plan this properly so it can sort of flow? Yes, I, there's going to be higher density. I, and I think as you get closer to the, um, you know, the West Davis Quarter, the interchanges, those are the areas where the higher density needs to be. And I'm, I don't even know what that ends up meaning in the end, but it needs to flow out. Those residential areas that are over there off of Mare and Seabisc and others. So maybe the next, the next set is R-114. And then an R-110, as you go out, sort of, I think Melinda called it a, a feathering aspect that helps with the flow of the city. Um, and I, I will go back to what Councilmember Adams said. Just the unwillingness to entertain a development agreement and talk through it. It, it just makes this question, because other folk, you're right, it's not a requirement. It's not, it's not in statute, but it's our, it's within our purview to ask for it. And the other, other folks who have come in with asking for rezones, we've asked for development agreements. We've asked for them to work with the neighbors just to smooth the process and work. And.
Can I, can I make a point? So we did, I did talk with Steph, and the communication that was talked about was it could be maybe R-16, it could be R-18, it could be R-110. And there's a big difference between when you go to R-110, you get 30-foot setbacks on the front. So my property is 215 and a half feet north to south. If you do the math, 55-foot road, you've got 80 feet north and south. 25 feet in the front and 15 in the back, that leaves 40 feet front to back. You can't build a livable home in anything less than about 38 feet front to back. That's one of the main reasons why I was trying to get the 25-foot front setback. And the, the displeasure for me for a development agreement was this encumbrance because I didn't know if it was gonna, if you guys were going to bite on R-16 or R-18, R2. Our, R-110 is a non-starter for me because I can't accomplish what I want to do. My children want to live here. All of my children's friends want to live here. They don't come to any of our planning or city council meetings and voice their opinion. They don't even know we're meeting. They have no dream of being able to live here because there's nothing under $485,000.
Brian, to your point, I will say, you know, my kids are like your kids. They've been watching our meetings. They would like to be able to afford Kaysville also. What we, what I think you hear us telling you is that we would love to see a development agreement. We would love to see you commit to something because it's one thing, not that you're, we're questioning whether or not you're going to do this, but anecdotally, and we have experienced this in our city and other developments, developer will come and say, hey, this is going to be affordable. Give me, give me a little bit more density. And we've done it in years past. I've been on the planning, I've been involved in the city now for almost seven years, Planning Commission, Council, and this. And, and then we'll, we'll come back and we'll say, well, how much, how much are these homes? And they are not affordable. They're $600,000. And they'll say, yeah, they just didn't pencil. And our, our expectation was, you said they would be $500,000 or less, and, and they are not.
Well, can you commit to what the interest rates are going to be in a year or two years from now?
I, I cannot, but the state has given us some tools to allow commitment to this. They've allowed us to deed restrict properties to request that and deed restrict affordability so that we can all get to the same place because we do want to solve it together. This is not a resistance saying we don't care about people and we don't care about our kids having homes to live in. It's saying that if, if the city's going to give up some density, we want to make sure that we get the return that we're expecting. So, and I do have to leave, so I apologize for that.
If, if Councilmember Hunt does not have anything to say right now, I would like to make a motion.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
I'll make a motion that we deny the rezone of 2.8 acres of property located at 1735 South, 550 West from A1 Light Agriculture to R4 One to Four Family Residential by Brian Carling.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Hunt?
Is this to deny?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carling.
Thank you. Do I move over?
You should.
You don't have to move over. You can stay where you're at.
No, be in the middle.
I want to be.
But you need the gavel.
Yeah. All right. Our next, I'm playing Mayor Pro Tem, so, um, sorry. So our work item is a Code Blue shelter update. So Mayor, do, oh, wait, wait. So Jason, will you be able to give that?
Sure, I'll fill in on that. Uh, I wish I had more to say. Uh, I think you, probably a lot of you have seen in the news that, uh, there was a plan to purchase the. the youth correctional facility out in the western portion of North Salt Lake City, and that looks like it's not going to follow through or going to come through. So, they're kind of back to what next, and they're still planning to meet and discuss other options. So, at this point, we don't have any further news on what's next, other than, I think we're probably going to go back to the same ideas that have been talked about, maybe the bus idea again, and-
So, Jason, so what changed with the bus idea? Because who didn't like that? I mean, because I thought-
I think the biggest concern with the bus idea was that it's a temporary solution, and both the county and the state, is my understanding, want more of a long-term solution. And this building in North Salt Lake was going to solve a lot of problems. It was going to be almost a turnkey type of building for a long-term solution and also provide beds for Salt Lake County, which is overflowing. And so, it's really, it got a lot of support from the state for funding because of that. But then, if you've seen in the news, just like everywhere else, lots of people not happy about it, and it got pretty ugly. So, they backed off of that and kind of going back to, all right, what next? And at this point, again, not quite sure what that's going to be. I think the bus idea is still getting consideration, but till we have, till the task force meets again, there's really not too much more to say.
You know, you develop a permanent solution and you have a permanent problem. So, any comments from council? All right, thanks, Jason. Councilmember reports. Any, Mike? Abby?
Just that ULCT's been good this week. We've gotten a lot of training on the legislative changes and different kind of zoning tools, like, that would be very applicable to the previous conversation we had. You know, I probably would have wanted to say something, but I know Mayor Trent had to leave, so I kept my comments to myself, but I think-
We didn't have a quorum as she left before.
Exactly. I wanted to vote before she left. But just that there are tools out there, there are ways to help with the affordability, and I think kind of we're all trying to help with that, and I think the state's finally giving us the tools we need to. So, but it was a very informative session, very helpful, always good to hear what's going on at the state.
All right, thanks, Abby. City manager report. Jason?
Just a couple of things. First, just kudos to Councilmember Hunt. She did a great job representing the city on our Get Healthy Utah Award, and I think a few of us who were there, they had a nice video presentation at the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference down in Salt Lake this last couple of days, and we were among a handful of cities that received that award this year. So, again, that's an organization that recognizes and promotes health around the state, both, you know, physical, good, healthy eating, mental health, all those things. So, we've met the criteria, and then three years from now, we'll have an opportunity to renew our designation as a healthy Utah community. So, great there. We'll put that out in social media and things as well to promote that. Some of the good work going on. Also, just as a heads up, looking forward to next month's council meetings, the normal second meeting of October will fall on the 17th, which is the Davis School District spring, or sorry, fall break. And just wondering if anyone's going to be out of town, or, I know Councilmember Jackson's not here right now, I know he's got young kids. But there's a couple of things going on. We are looking to have a special work session that month as well. Still trying to get a date. That'll probably be either on a Friday morning like we've had in the past, or on a weeknight if it works out. So, that might be another reason to maybe not have that second meeting if there's not a lot of business happening during the last half of October. The purpose of the work session is to revisit kind of where we left off a few months ago when we were talking about all the capital planning and the upcoming needs. We got a lot of great information working with the council. I know we're only two months into the new fiscal year, but we'd like to kind of pick up where we left off and start talking about some of those things. Specifically, we'd like to reengage with the architecture firm CRSA that did the needs analysis for our operation center. That's the study that we did back in 2022 that projected about a $36 million cost for the operation center, and obviously, that's way too high, not what we're looking for. So, we'd like to revisit that, see if we can come up with a much lower number. But that's part of this plan to kind of prioritize what our costs are and what the greatest needs are, along with all the other things that are kind of on the agenda. Cole mentioned the partnership with Kaysville Junior High and the gymnasium, that's kind of coming up in the next couple of years, and what we're going to do with the library building next door, some things like that. So, anyway, and along with that, one other thing we've been talking with staff about is just kind of our overall infrastructure, power, water lines, roads, and kind of trying to understand, are we projecting the future costs of, you know, replacing that infrastructure when it needs to be replaced? Are we setting aside enough money? I think we're feeling pretty good about most things. I think water is the one that concerns some of us. Just, we've got a lot of aging water lines in the city. And just an anecdote from today alone, the crews repaired three major leaks around the city, I think one out by you, Councilmember Adams, and they did a fantastic job. I think the cost on just the asphalt replacements of those water leaks today is $30,000. So, these are just really expensive things, and, you know, a few months ago, you might recall, we had a few hundred feet of water main on 200 North that we wanted to replace, and we thought it was going to be 1.2 million, and the bits came in at 2.2 million. So, those are the kind of things that we're thinking, are we really doing a really good job of planning for what those future costs are going to be when we get to the eventual point of when we're going to need to replace some of these water lines and other infrastructure? So, what I'm getting to is there's a great company that helps do this. We've talked to a few cities along the Wasatch Front that have used them, and they have a presentation, we'd like to have them kind of present to council and show their modeling. It can be a really useful tool. Just to give you one little quick idea of what it does, you know, when you're trying to set rates, for example, for water, it allows you to plug in a variable on the rate and show you if your rates are going to be enough to cover your future costs of replacing your infrastructure. And, you know, you can kind of play with that variable and say, okay, we're going to hold the rate this year, and that'll show you, well, if you do it, hold it this year, then this is what happens next year, you're going to have to raise it this much next year. And so, it's just a really valuable tool, I think, for staff and the council to use when we're having those discussions. And that was the biggest feedback we got from all the cities we spoke with, is it's just been a really appreciated tool by the city councils that have seen it. And so, again, I think a really helpful tool that we'd like to talk about in this work session. So, long-winded, I apologize, but that's kind of the subject of the October work session, and we'll get a date out once we kind of know that, when that's going to happen. Other than that, I think that really sums it up, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Next thing I guess, adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I have to use the restroom before you open.
You got 30 seconds.
I think that's enough time.
I guess you don't need to be.
I will wait for you. I'm the old, Mike and I are the old guys, we should be running.
Jeez, John.
So, Nick, is Perry going to be able to vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not in the bylaws, so Perry can vote, the president can vote, or the acting president can vote.
We only need three for a quorum. We only need three for a quorum.
On this?
On anything.
That's what I thought.
Three. But you only need, yeah, that's what I mean, you only need three, right?
That's a long 30 seconds.
Could we have voted after the mayor left?
Don't make it off.
Yeah, we could. And what I was asking, hey, no, what I was asking, Abby, I was asking if you had something to say.
Well, I know, but I thought she had to be here.
No, she did not. We had a quorum without her.
Now I look like a dork.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
You never do.
I wanted to say something. It's out of order.
I was seriously asking you to-
I know, I'm not blaming you.
Okay, I was not trying to cut you off.
I'm not blaming anyone but myself.
Well, it happened very quickly.
Well, because we were coming up on 8:30 and-
But it was getting repetitive.
And nothing was going to change.
Kind of like it was getting repetitive.
Yeah. I just think, I have just patience. I feel like I'm just, patience on the books, relentless.
Hey, where's Nate?
Scotland.
Scotland.
Yeah.
Really?
Or is that was the original plan?
Eating haggis.
Is it though?
Yes.
These meetings are the best.
Yes.
It's fairly hard.
You said 35?
Maybe, maybe 40.
Almost didn't wash my hands.
We're going to open the Kaysville Business Park Architectural Review Committee meeting. And who's running, who's, Melinda? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm going to present the next two items together, and I know I sent an email about this earlier. I'm not sure what happened with the three staff reports that I wrote for the Architectural Committee meeting tonight, but they didn't make it into the packet, the public packet. The attachments were there. So, that didn't make my day when I realized that. And so, we did, thanks to Mindy's help, but we do have those printed out for you. I know you really didn't allow for you to have any time to read through those. But that said, we do have Trimart team here tonight. Thank you, Mayor Petro, for leaving one council meeting to come to another. We're glad she was able to make it tonight. So, the first item, we chose to separate these out on the agenda because we wanted to have the opportunity to have the review committee vote on the variance first. If you don't want to grant the variance, you still could approve the building addition. So, again, just to orient ourselves, this is the aerial view of where the property is located on Flint Meadow Drive, backs up to Camper World, and does not back up to any property that is residential. And oddly enough, the residential property behind the business park is actually in the Leighton Boundaries and not in Kaysville. So, this is just a look of the front view of the Trimart building. The variance request is for materials, and so, I have a screenshot here of two things. One, the section that details that walls with metal or painted metal as the outer layer are not allowed, and the request for the variance is to use metal panels. I will suggest this, but, you know, when these standards were put in place 20 years ago, products were a lot different, and aesthetics of those products were a lot different. So, that said, I think there has been a lot of progress in metal building materials since that time. Just something to consider as you determine whether or not you want to grant this request. My guess is that, at the time, the city who created the business park didn't want to see the corrugated metal buildings that you see a lot of times in industrial areas. And to the credit of the council 20 years ago, the Kaysville Business Park is one of the nicest-looking business parks, industrial parks, that I've seen. So, I think that mission was accomplished. The lower portion of the slide there just shows the variance that the committee can grant a variance. One of the things, so this is not a variance to the zoning code. Zoning code variances have a requirement in state law that you have to meet five different criteria. So, I do want to differentiate that this is not a variance to the zoning code. That said, I do think there, that the review committee has a lot of discretion with whether or not you grant a variance. There's no criteria set forth as to when you do or when you don't grant a variance. So, that will be, you know, just something that you'll have to feel through as a board. The materials that the Trimart team is proposing to use, they are used on a building that is in Centerville, just recently constructed. It's a fine-line steel fabrication building, and these are a couple photos from that location. And a different type of, it's a smooth texture, but the same types of materials were used. This is Fire Station 81 in Murray, and that was constructed, it was completed when I was there. So, in late '21 is when this building was constructed. So, there's another example for you to look at, the, you know, just the aesthetics of that metal panel. Based on conversations we had with the review committee last year, when we had a variance request, you continued the item and asked staff to send out a notice to the property owners to see if they were in favor of the variance request. So, we proactively did that this time. We received two comments, and one was for, I did forward those to you. So, one was for, as long as it matched the color scheme of the existing building, and the other one was against. And he mentioned that they, he had previously owned a metal building, and after, you know, a number of years, it started to rust out. Again, I think that is a differentiation in those materials and how they've progressed through the last 20 years. So, that said, the agenda items are listed separately, but I'll continue and just kind of go over the request for the building addition, which you always love to see this, when you have a business that is local and successful and in demand to, you know, so much that they need to expand. So, that's the case with this request, and they want to put in, it's about 14,000 square foot, is that what it was? Let's see.
Yeah, 14,000.
14,000, or was it? Yeah, okay, yeah. So, just under 14,000 square feet. They, in order to do that, they'll need to reconfigure some of their parking. We have looked at the parking ordinance, even with the addition, they still would have adequate parking per our zoning code for parking. They would also need to remove some trees that are existing there, and they have committed to relocating the trees that they would remove or replacing those trees in the same number of what is removed. And I think that's essentially the gist of that request. As I said, we do have the applicant and their team here tonight if you have questions. So, I'll just, at this point, turn it over to the committee to see what questions you may have for me or the applicant.
Any, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and explaining the rationale for the material and the change?
So, there's a couple reasons we wanted to use a metal panel. One, for it has an insulated factor. So, these are insulated metal panels, which give us a better R-value and helps help with the energy efficiency of the building. Also, where the buildings join together, if we were to do a CMU-type construction building, it would require some pretty massive CMU lintels to span the distances so we can keep that area as open as possible for the shop flow. So, those are a couple of things. Also, to try to match the existing block is going to be fairly difficult. We could potentially paint the entire building and the new addition to have them match and be similar, but we wanted to give a similar, aesthetically, color scheme, similar look, but give a different feel so it didn't, so it'll look like a different feature, so.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions, Mike?
You know, I agree with Melinda. I think that the, when the business park put those requirements in, there was a lot of steel buildings being built in industrial parks, which were just the Butler buildings with the, you know, the old metal, ribbed metal panels on it. And since then, you've seen a lot of changes in construction. Like in the old days, they really didn't have any flashings on the bottoms of them. They touched the ground, they would get rotten. You look at this and the pictures that they provided and the applicant told me a building and I didn't realize, but I stopped on my way home and I went and I drove all the way around it and took pictures of it and everything, but these are finished panels. They're finished, corrugated, beautiful panels. They put flashings on the bottoms of them. They do all kinds of things to make sure you don't have those issues that was the concern of the older buildings and things like that. And building materials have come a long way in the last few years and you're right, it is an outdated requirement, but back in the day when they did it, they were so afraid people would go down there and frame a wall and put up aluminum siding. That's what they didn't want in the business park and that's probably what would have happened or the Butler buildings. And we've been really diligent in making sure that hasn't happened, but even a concrete tilled-up building is not a pretty building unless you do a whole bunch of accents to it, paint it, do all kinds of things. And as you look at these panels, you'll see they're all corrugated, there's definitely design to them and they're not just, they're, they're pretty good sized panels. If you're doing the same, they're about three foot by twenty foot or three by, whatever your sections are between your steel. But it's just modern. It's more modern, it's a better system, it insulates the building. I don't know why we wouldn't want something like this to go in the business park.
All right.
Perry?
Yeah, John?
Abby, you have.
I just have one question. I agree with what has been said already, but if, for whatever reason, I mean, I don't think it's going to happen, but if what, if this metal siding became derelict, I don't know, if it ended up not looking as good, you know, years down the line, is there a mechanism in that business park ordinance, like a code enforcement type thing?
No, I don't believe there is. We just rely on our typical code enforcement through our zoning code. I think I have looked at that before and I'm, I'm certain enough that I, that it's, we just would rely on our zoning code. I can check though, while, while you discuss.
John, any comments?
No, I, I think that, to Mike's point, I wouldn't, I, I still wouldn't think that we would want to change the, the writing on it, like, because I think that if we did say now we allow metal, that, that we'd run the risk of, you know, what he just mentioned, but I, I feel like the variance gives us a chance to be able to say, as long as you're gonna do what you're saying you're gonna do, then that's when we would approve the variance. So I think that it's still.
I agree with that.
Even though it's old, I still think it's a good thing to have in there because I think like people could do what you're talking about and just throw crappy sheet metal or whatnot. So it, I think it looks great. I, I feel good about it.
Okay, no, and I appreciate, I stopped by there today and really do appreciate the time and just the fact that this allows you to easier to be able to tear down that wall that'll be adjacent, you know, and help with the flow of what you're gonna do makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely.
We appreciate having you here in Kaysville and what you're doing.
Thank you, we appreciate being here, we really enjoy.
And I, I go back to Melinda's comment earlier. You drive through the business park we have over there and because of the ordinance that we have or the, I guess the ordinance, you know, it looks good. You know, it's not a typical industrial park, like if you're going through, well, let's see, get it off on eighty-nine going up towards the Capitol. That's a pretty crappy looking area there. Sorry.
And I do really appreciate Councilmember Adams' comments of saying, you know, this is a one-time deal, this isn't just a blanket okay for everything because you, you could get the next guy to say, well, you did that, why can't you do this, you know? I, I think that's a good point you made.
So is this, can we approve one and two or do we have to do them separately?
I, I think it's fine.
If you're gonna approve them, you can approve them in one motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve item, do we call them item or agenda?
Whatever.
On here. Item number, item number two and item number three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's see, I can vote on this one, so I'm first. Perry, aye?
Aye.
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 All right.
Hey, wait, while we have you here though, this fourth one, I don't want you guys to leave. We're gonna.
We figured we'd be wrapped into that one.
Yeah.
While you're here.
While you're here.
Okay, I just didn't want you to skedaddle, like, do you care if I ask him, Perry?
No.
Mayor Protem, what are your thoughts on this? Did you guys respond to the survey?
Oh, yeah, we did. I think we're one of the only ones that actually responded to it.
And, and your response was what, if you don't mind?
We'd be happy to.
You would prefer this body to go to the owners versus being left here?
Yeah. Busy. Yeah, I think, I think the general consensus over there is people are knowledgeable enough and willing to work with each other enough that we could, we could manage it ourselves.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Thanks. All right, Melinda, next one?
Yeah, so a year ago, last month, and my apologies this took so long to get back in front of you, the, we held a discussion about the option of transferring the Architectural Review Committee responsibility over from the City Council to the property owners. And the council, you directed staff at that time to survey the property owners to see what it was that they would prefer. So we finally were able to put a survey together earlier this spring and then we initially, I think, only had four responses of the forty-one or forty-two property owners that we have over there. Did a second push and ended up with fourteen responses. And, and I, as you often do with surveys, I kind of asked the same question twice, but in a different way. So there was a slight variation between the two questions and the responses, but the first question was, would you prefer the City Council continue to serve? And fifty-seven percent said no. The next question was, would you prefer the property owners serve as the ARC? And sixty-four percent said yes. So I think really the takeaway here is that between, you know, fifty-six and sixty-four percent would prefer that they do this instead of the council. I think that makes a lot of sense from a practical standpoint, right? We require people to come here on an evening, that can be hard. I, I myself left here, went over to my niece's soccer game in Farmington for ten minutes and rushed back so I could be here on time, but people have commitments, one, you know, it's a lot of times hard to get here in the evening. It does delay the development process for sometimes a few weeks, depending on when those applications come in. And I think most property owners over there understand that there is this process in place, but there's been a few times that we've caught this through the building permit system and so they're ready to go, they want their building permit as quickly as possible and we have to turn around and say, well, we gotta take this to City Council, the next meeting is three weeks. So there's a great benefit, I think, from the standpoint of timing to be able to have the property owners who may have a schedule that's more amenable. You know, they could do this during the middle of the business day, which then you could just run over, have, you know, the property owners could have a meeting and, and may be able to just assemble a meeting in a quicker fashion than we do as we already have ours scheduled. So I think there's a lot of benefits, but in the end, this is something that is up to the committee to determine and just a couple of things, but if, if you do ask us to go forward and make this change, and, and I should have spoken with Mr. Mills about this, but I think there would be some legal documents that we'd need to get put together and make sure we follow the process. We may want to engage outside legal counsel to help with that just because of the prosecutorial workload that Mr. Mills has. I can let him weigh in on that, but I think there would be some expenses. Again, we want to make sure we would do this the right way and there would be documents that we'd need to record against the, all the properties within the business park. And I would anticipate that this would be, you know, this isn't gonna be something that we would accomplish within the next two months, but we would work towards that and, and I would think as well, before we turn that over, that we would want the existing committee, you, the council, to be involved in having that new board created and established before we transition that responsibility. So those are just some of my, my thoughts additional to, that weren't in the staff report, if this is something the council wants us to move forward with.
I just have a question. I mean, I'm all for turning this over, as you know, but I, I do have one question and I, I don't know if this is a Nick question or a Melinda question. It's if, because everybody's a rule follower, we know that, everybody follows rules, right? So somebody applies for a building permit down there for an addition and we give them a building permit because we don't do anything with covenants, we don't, we don't look in a subdivision, we don't make sure houses meet all the covenants, we don't look at all that. But the business park is a little different where we've done it and then all of a sudden somebody gets a building permit, they're, got the footings, foundations in and then all of a sudden, somebody gets upset and says, what are you doing over there? Our, I just want to make sure that we're not going to be in the middle of the lawsuit.
Yeah, I can, I can weigh in on that. We wouldn't be, there's, there's processes we could put in place if we were concerned about that to make sure that in that area, the business park maybe had a sign-off on that before it came to us, but if we didn't want to do that, if you, I should say, didn't want to, as a council, didn't want to do that, no, we would not be involved in that. That would be private lawsuits.
You can see what I mean.
Absolutely, I can see the concern there.
It could turn into a ugly finger pointing thing and where we have had full control of the business park and, believe me, I, I want you owners to have full control.
Well, I think that's been my biggest concern about this is that, that possibly our body being in charge of this has helped, you know, keep conflict, you know, keep there from being conflict down there and that's the only, well, that, I have two reservations about this, giving it up, is one, that something like that occurs where the people who happen to volunteer to be on the board or whatever end up having such different ideas than those that are written on this note and then they're, they don't, you know, with us right now, they have us to blame, like, oh, the bad city council, but, but when it's my bad neighbor is the one that did this, then, you know, that's, sometimes we're, we're providing them an out, I guess.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
And then my second concern is, just like anything, I mean, like, you know, that isn't elected and maybe this, maybe these people would be elected, but a lot of the times, the people who volunteer to do things, I mean, you look at like, our planning commission is so much, the people that are volunteered to be on the planning commission have a lot different views than some of us that have been elected, right? And so in some ways, you may end up, I don't know if you guys have thought about this, but you may end up with the people who volunteer to do it, may all have the same, same type of mindset and you may be discouraged with what they end up approving and disapproving. Those are my two biggest concerns with it and I guess now you're saying that it would cost us money? That's the third concern.
Yeah, I don't anticipate, well, sorry.
Sorry, Nick, go ahead.
I don't anticipate, I would have to look at exactly what needs to be done, but I wouldn't imagine that it'd be very costly, I would imagine it'd be less than twenty thousand dollars total, if, if anything. I think that if, if it's something that we could pace, it's something we could do in-house. I don't want to commit to that, but I think, I think it's something that we could do in-house. And, and we could always draft this or design this in such a way that we still had staff input. I may not want to volunteer, Ms. Greenwood, although she's volunteering me for work tonight.
I didn't volunteer you, I did the opposite.
You could, you could still keep some level of city involvement down there, it just wouldn't have to come to you as a council, as a body, but city staff could still be involved as part of that rewriting those.
I mean, I, just, just to throw, I know Center Cal in Farmington, which is Station Park, I don't know what agreements Farmington has with them, I don't get involved in that, but I do know that they will not issue a permit in Station Park until they get a letter from Center Cal. But that takes, but that just goes to staff so that they, yeah, that they, and it keeps the council from making decisions, so Center Cal makes all those decisions on what, they're the Architectural Review, and they're very restrictive, so I, I don't know, that might be one way to do it, but I hate to put onus on staff, you know, but you already are. I mean, we already have the onus on you right now by doing this, but it might be simpler if it was a process like Center Cal does that says, you know, we won't issue a building permit in Station Park unless we have this Architectural Review Letter from Center Cal. And they also won't issue a certificate of occupancy until they get a letter from Center Cal, but that's just a different way to do it.
If I could add some additional thoughts, so I, I think, I think we could definitely build in to a transition some protections. Yes, we could have staff involvement, we could also make it so that they couldn't change any of the development standards without approval from the City Council. I, I think one of the things I would recommend, and, and this increases my workload, but I think that prior to transitioning over the responsibilities, there's probably some sections of the development guide that we want to update. Specifically, the landscaping, just, I think the water-wise landscaping really is not built into that. I think there's a great benefit that could come from updating some of the portions of that guide and we could even spell out perhaps reasons or justifications for approving a variance or not, right? We, we, we could amend those development guides before transitioning them over. And then I believe, and I, I think, part of my hesitancy with any of this is just that we'd need to code, pour through state code, read state code, get up to speed on everything that would need to happen to transition this, but I think that we could do that in such a way that if there were to be any, and maybe, maybe the council serves as an appeal authority if there's something that gets appealed or that, again, any changes to those development guides would have to be approved by the City Council so that we maintain the integrity of the development that's been established over there. Now as well, I think most of the properties over there are developed and so what we're going to continue to get and what we've seen in the time that I've been here is these building additions and they want to match what's existing, I mean, we require that as well, but, you know, there, there is a little bit of acreage left over there to develop, but I think by and large, you know, the, the risk to having some really unwelcome developments is fairly low. We could also build into, to go back to some of your current concerns in the question, I did a quick check, I don't, I wasn't able to really easily see if there's a code enforcement process, but again, I'm, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure that it's not in there and we just go through our city code. But we could also establish and put into the development standards and the business park guide some type of a code enforcement process if the council wanted to do that in addition. So I think there's probably a lot of ways that we could address some of these concerns if, if it's the desire of the, the committee to transition that over. And again, I, you know, I don't think this is something that we could do quickly, especially because we want to make sure that we do it right, but I think we would have check-ins with the committee as we progress with this and, and make sure that before we do that final baton pass, that we ensure everything's in place to continue the great product that we have over there.
Abby, do you have any comments, thoughts?
Mostly just that, yeah, I agree with what Melinda's saying, that we would want to take a good look at it before we handed it over. I don't necessarily think we need to give code enforcement to them, I mean, if it's in city code, I think that's sufficient, we wouldn't, I feel like, I don't know, I mean, it sounds kind of like an HOA and you hear so many horror stories about HOA enforcement, I would rather. I would rather not put that on them, and it's an additional responsibility that a lot of people probably don't want to deal with. So I don't think there needs to be enforcement over there, but, you know, if they, if they would like to be in charge of it, and if we can just, you know, tighten it up and, and look at it, kind of, you know, like John was saying, you know, let's, let's look at it and say, okay, well, maybe we would allow certain kinds of metal and put that in, or, or whatever, you know, not that you said that specifically, but just as an example of, of things maybe that we would want to look into, so that it's maybe more modern and less onerous than, and then hand it over, so that it, there's less of, less gray area in there, I think that could be beneficial.
And I like the idea of saying, like, any changes to it would have to come from council. I think that would help at least ease my mind a lot on, like, a certain group of saying, like, oh, we want to make this change, and it would change without, you know, I think that would ease my mind as far as...
And, and it would probably be something as simple as something that's in the consent items, you know, it's put in the package, and so... So my, my one question, and this would be for Melinda and Jason, because each of you have worked in different cities, have you, have you seen, you know, been a part of something like this, where, with business parks, or not really, you know?
I, I think it's a pretty unique thing that Kaysville did, and, and I'm not aware of any others as well. I think, right, initially, this, the city bought the property, we acted as the developer. I, I think how that's been tackled in other cities is just that you do put regulations in place for that particular zone, or even design guidelines that are required, but I, I have not seen this in, and don't know of anything else.
Okay. No, I just was, was, was curious. So what, so on this item, are you looking for us to give direction to staff to move forward with transferring? I mean, is that, is, so is there, do we need to make a motion to that? Because I, you know, what's written, was this an update on the survey?
I think a motion either to recommend moving forward with the transition, or to not, would be my preference.
Okay.
What do you think, Amelia? Is Amelia, right? I forgot, we have Amelia here, who's youth city council representative, and she sat through the whole meeting, and I was supposed to ask her questions.
She should have. Why didn't we bring, we should have brought her up into native position.
I just got so heated. What do you think? Have you been paying attention to this?
I have been.
I don't think I've seen you play with your phone once.
No, I don't like being on my phone.
That was probably hard.
No, I don't, I'm not on it too much. Yeah, thank you. I don't have anything specifically to...
Put her on the spot. Good job.
I put you on the spot, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Would, would, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, yeah, suggest, or, or that we move towards transferring the Architectural Review Committee to the owners of the business park, with some of the stipulations aforementioned and considerations that we've discussed.
Well, I hope that Mindy took good notes on that one.
I've heard what you've gone through.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mike?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, and I think that's it, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
No, I think we should stay all night.
No, no, okay, thank you.
Great job.
Good job, Perry.